Here, Louis Williams. Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Will you stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item C, we have a proclamation declaring October 23rd to 31st as Red Ribbon Week, and Councilman Ham is going to read the proclamation for us. On behalf of Glenn Lewis, Mayor Lewis.
Yeah, and just our Red Ribbon Parade, we haven't had it for the past two years because of COVID, and we're excited that it's going to be coming back this year. It'll be Saturday, October the 29th. The parade will start at 10:00 a.m., and it starts here at Fifth and Broadway, and will end at the Central Station parking lot. That'll be the route of the parade. But here's a proclamation that I'd like to read. It says, "Whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in the nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention efforts by the community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in American during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through 31st, and whereas businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, local religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long campaign, and whereas the City of Moore further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore, I, Mark Ham, on behalf of our mayor Glenn Lewis and the entire city council, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2022, as Red Ribbon Week, and the City of Moore and encourage all citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. Signed and approved tonight." So just encourage everyone to come out that Saturday if you're available, and bring your kids, and as always, there's just a... It's been such a great event that we've had since 1988, and we were really disappointed that we had to take a pause for a couple of years. But it's coming back, and we're having people sign up and enter their floats, whether it be businesses and some of our schools, and just encourage you to do the same. You can find out more about it on our Facebook page, More Red Ribbon. Go there, and if you have any questions, you can also just give me a call, and my information's on the City of Moore webpage. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Item two is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October 3rd, 2022. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held August 2nd, 2022. Item C, accept public water improvements to serve the Grace Point Edition Walker Tower, being south of Northeast 12th Street and west of Santa Fe Avenue, application by Ron Walters. Item D, accept public water sewer paving and drainage improvements to serve the Edgewater Edition, Section 3, being south of Southeast 19th Street and west of Sunny Lane Avenue, application by R&amp;R Homes. Item E, accept 810 square feet of permanent roadway easement and 350 square feet of temporary construction easement from the Lloyd S. Elliott Trustee for construction and maintenance of the Eastern Avenue Widening and Reconstruction Project. Item F, adopt resolution number 3922 establishing the 911 emergency telephone fee rate for fiscal year '23. Item G, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year '22 through '23 in the amount of $2,800,143.45.
Well, make a motion that we approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item three, discuss the intersection alternatives prepared by EST Engineering Services for the Broadway and Eastern Avenue Widening Project and authorize staff to proceed as directed.
Vice Mayor and Council, at the last meeting, we gave a brief presentation of the intersections for the Broadway Avenue and Eastern Avenue Widening Project. There's a couple of you that weren't able to be here to ask any questions or address that. So what we've asked is for EST to come back and give a brief presentation, and Amanda Newberry is here from EST to give a brief summary of that presentation from last week and be able to address any questions you have.
Well, good evening. I'm Amanda Newberry with EST. Today, I'm going to give you just a brief summary that just highlights the two options at both of the intersections that we studied. So we studied the 19th Tower-Broadway intersection and then the Broadway and Eastern intersection. The first one that we're going to look at is the Broadway Tower and 19th Street. This is just a picture of the existing. It's got a skewed intersection angle on the south side that does not meet the current ASHTO requirements for the skew of safe intersections, so we would recommend improving it. We looked at a few alternatives, and the top two were Concept 2A. This one provides two separate 90-degree intersections. It would be two signals that'll work together and be able to allow 19th Street traffic to go through both signals on a green, and the only cars that would be stopped would be cars that would be turning from either Tower or Broadway. And those cars, we'll have a video in a minute that you can see kind of how that intersection operates. This is the engineered preferred alternative for this intersection, but I'm going to show you one more. This is actually the video for that one, so we'll go ahead and play that. So each car that's white is planning to go through the intersection. The blues are planning to turn left, and any yellow cars you see are planning to turn right. So you can see that there was a bit of a queue on Broadway, but as the light turned green, the entire queue cleared, and that's what gives us that preferred level of service. The A and the Bs, that's what you're going to see where you're not having to go through multiple cycle lengths to be able to go through the green light. Each time, there was a few cars there that you could see they did get stopped at that middle intersection, but we did recommend closing Linda Lane. This allowed two T intersections. This is a lot safer, and it allows the signals to work a lot more efficiently. And so those back, if for any reason those vehicles did back up, they really, they're not blocking anything. There's no hazard there, so if they decided to proceed into the intersection. But this video just shows that pretty much as soon as that queue fills that small space, the light's turning green anyway, so you're really not getting that backup through the intersection.
And what is the, with this concept, what would the grade be of this intersection during the peak morning and afternoon?
Yeah, so for alternative 2A, then in the AM, it's a level of service A, and for the PM, it's a level of service B as in Bravo.
And help us to understand A and B. So an F would mean that it's just completely insufficient to handle the traffic flow, and traffic is backed up. What is it now? Do you know what its rating is now?
The existing is a C in the morning, and a D as in Delta in the evening. So we'd be improving both by two levels of service. Basically, a level of service A is what we call free flow, where you really don't notice that there's traffic around you. Level of service B, you notice that there's traffic, but you can easily change lanes. You can easily get to where you need to turn right. You need to get in the left-hand lane, turn left. You've got no issue. You've got gaps that you can get into. Level of service C, those gaps start closing. And level of service D, you have trouble moving over. And then anything past D is kind of a gridlock, where you're dependent on traffic stopping and letting you move a lane to get to your right-hand turn or to get to your left-hand turn.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on 2A? So then the other one that we looked at was Concept 3. This one improves the skew, but it does still leave a single signal light on 19th Street, a single four-legged intersection. The improvements that we made was that we shifted Broadway a small amount to be able to improve that skew, and then we improved that right-turn lane. You can see that existing right-turn lane is very small. I don't know if my pointer will reach that far. No, not on the screen. But there's a little right-turn lane that's there now, and we just basically backed that away from the intersection to allow trucks and vehicles to go around that corner more safely. So there's a little video of how this one works as well. So in this case, there's not the two intersections. You're coming up to a single light and stopping. You can see that the white cars are planning to continue on through, so there's not a whole lot of traffic that's turning right onto Tower from that westbound 19th Street. The predominant movement is to continue through. Again, you're not really, you're not going to have to go through multiple cycle lengths. This one operates. This is a B and a C, so in the PM, you have a C as in Charlie, and in the AM, you have a B as in Beta.
This one leaves Linda Lane open.
This one does leave Linda Lane open, yes.
How far, I don't know if you can tell this or not, and I don't mean to keep asking, but how far in the future will this intersection, if it were the one that is recommended, how long would it stay at an A and a B?
We project it to 2045. So in the year 2045, it's level of service A and B. We did not project that further to do a breakover analysis, so I don't know when it would start changing.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
So Brooks, what's the next steps on this?
Well, we're asking the council to, I mean, obviously EST has a couple of routes they could go with their design. We're asking council for input as far as directing staff, and by extension, EST on which are the ones to approve, to pursue. So in this case, it would be option 2A or option 3.
Okay.
Well, I'd recommend option 2A.
I would as well. Does anyone show up to the meeting tonight that lives on Linda Lane? That would like to speak quickly?
And I know the last thing they talked about, was it eight houses that it would affect?
Yeah, I would think they'd be happy. It's going to be a cul-de-sac at the end of the day, so less traffic on the street.
I like 2A as well.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so then the other intersection that we looked at was Broadway and Eastern. This one is a narrow X intersection. You have the significant skew both directions. We looked at four alternatives, but I'm going to show two again. These are the kind of the top two from the last meeting. This one is a skew correction, so we take Broadway and we swing it out kind of both ways to improve that angle, but it's still going to be a skewed intersection, will be a signal light, and 24th will connect into Broadway. And then the other alternative that we looked at here is an offset roundabout. We looked at a couple of configurations of where that roundabout could go, but this one is very close to the existing intersection, just shifted east a little bit. This allowed us to keep the church intact and take a minimal amount of ride away from the City of Moore property that's a designated park property. The 24th connection would be on Eastern for this alternative.
Just confirm on Concept 1, we would have to take the church?
No, neither of the ones. There is an alternative 3A in your packet that would have taken the church.
Would take the church?
Just 3A. We're not recommending it, but it looks like this one.
Here, but maybe it's further south.
Let's be further south.
And could you just give us the grading of those intersections after the improvements?
So in the year 2045, do nothing existing, you have a level of service F in both AM and PM. For Concept 1, which is the offset of Broadway, and it's still a four-legged intersection with a signal, you get Bravo both AM and PM. And for Concept 3, which is the engineers recommended, you have level of service A, Alpha for both of them. In the year 2045. So this is the offset roundabout on the screen here that does, that would impact the church. We would take the church with 3A.
Oh, perfect.
But the one we're recommending is Alternative 3.
Okay.
Okay, my clicker's got a little crazy. That one there is shifted east to be able to avoid the church.
As tough as it is for me to say, I guess we go with the roundabout.
That'll be good.
Excited.
We'll name it after Melissa.
Pedestrian traffic on here, I don't see like crosswalks or...
Yes, when we get into the design level, we will be putting in crosswalks. They wouldn't be signalized because it's a roundabout, but pedestrians are handled safely on a roundabout because they're only having to cross one direction of traffic at a time, and it's a very short crossing.
Okay.
Where you, when you have a four-legged intersection that's, you know, five lanes wide, they're having to cross a much longer distance before they get to a safety island.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
I like the Concept 3.
I do as well. Is anybody here to speak on either of these items for these intersections? Okay, thank you. I liked the...
Wait, somebody's...
Oh, yes, sorry, go ahead. I didn't see your hand. Please state your name and address for the record, please, and just note to everyone here, there is a five-minute time limit on speaking.
My name is Tom Poiser. I live at 4217 Farm Road. I'd just like to ask maybe everyone in this room, how many times you've gone to a city and you've run and you've traveled through a roundabout, and how complicated and complex it is?
Agreed.
I asked, and I was told that the City of Moore, maybe Officer Nathan can answer this question, does not have a roundabout.
We have one new one over there by Costco.
Yeah, as that develops, it'll...
Ties into the...
Right.
So we've got one.
But the traffic there is almost zero.
It doesn't count, but we got one.
I am not an engineer, but I think that would be complicated for any visitors, and it could be confusing to all constituents in the city, and that's all I wanted to say. I don't like roundabouts.
I feel your pain, nor do I.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
But I'm not an engineer, so...
It'll be fun.
I'm with that.
Yeah, I'm good, it's fine.
I don't... Amanda, thank you very much.
All right, we'll go to item four. Item four, considering adopting resolution number 3822, declaring the necessity... We don't vote on...
Make recommendations on which one?
Yeah, I mean, if the council would like to make a formal recommendation, you can.
Okay, I'll make a recommendation that we go with both of the recommended proposals for the two intersections. 2A and 3.
Yeah, I do agree it could cause a bit of confusion, but I'd prefer to go with the engineer recommended proposal as well.
Just need somebody to second my motion.
I'm not, I don't want a roundabout. Guess I'll vote for it.
So on the roundabout, is there like a certain recommended traffic count, Amanda, or even Jerry? A recommended traffic count that, because I have seen roundabouts work successfully. I know that Norman uses them quite frequently, Midtown uses them, and they are very successful. I understand the concerns, but I am not anti-roundabout. So I'm just curious if there's something warm and fuzzy that you can say about the traffic count in that area? I am not going to Norman your more. I'd be the last person to do that. I'm just saying that I have seen them work successfully.
So a single round, single-lane roundabout can accommodate 25,000 vehicles as the ADT. This in 2045, this intersection gets about 7,000. So you have a lot of years of growth before you need to do anything different, even if it was constructed as a single lane. We are recommending a multi-lane roundabout, which increases the capacity of that roundabout further. And the other thing that we point out is the conflict points and the possibilities of injury crashes. That's reduced by between 72 and 80% through a nationwide study on the conversion of a stop sign or a signal to a roundabout. And that's just because of all the little dots there in that diagram. The one that's a four-legged intersection, and this is just two lanes in each direction, is 32 conflict points, 32 chances for vehicles to run into each other, where with a single-lane roundabout, that number is only eight. Well, with our intersection, we would have 56 dots if we left it as a four-legged intersection that has three lanes for one direction and two lanes in the other, or five-lane legs. And then it would be reduced to 24 with the multi-lane roundabout. And then those 24, none of them can be head-on collisions because the entrances to the roundabouts are designed to win. You can't really enter it the wrong way unless you really worked really hard to get there. And so you're getting side swipes, you're getting off-the-road crashes. It's not going to eliminate all crashes, but it does significantly reduce those injury crashes that can be a problem.
And I would just like to remind the council that the recommendation tonight does not necessarily mean it's going to be the final, final one, because we'll have to come back to council with the more detailed plans. Obviously, these items will be on a ballot for a GL bond. We'll have public meetings. So if at some point during the process, the council wants to go a different direction, you certainly have that opportunity. But this will direct, what you do tonight will direct EST to present more detailed plans. So it'll be better information for the council and for the public at large.
I mean, I'm not a fan of the roundabout, but I don't like the other option either. So I mean, I think the roundabout...
Sounds much safer.
Right, right. So...
All right, I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. We call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item four, consider adopting resolution number 3822, declaring the necessity for acquiring certain real property and/or easements from Brooklyn Company LLC near Eastern Avenue and Southeast 19th Street. More particular, here and after, described all within the City of Moore, County of Cleveland, State of Oklahoma, for the purpose of the Eastern Avenue Widening and Reconstruction Project and the City of Moore in declaring the necessity for acquiring said property for roadway and drainage purposes.
Vice Mayor and Council, this resolution would allow us to move forward with eminent, to institute eminent domain procedure for condemnation. The two pieces of property are essentially the, at the intersection of 19th and Eastern, on the west side, it's the, there's a small little corner triangle of 200 square feet that is owned by 7-Eleven. And then on the other side, that strip center that has Marco's Pizza is also owned by the Brooklyn Company, and they have another little 200-foot, square-foot triangle. We thought that we had got to a point where we were in good shape and ready to go, and that they were going to sign, and then as it got closer and closer to the time to award the project, the Eastern Avenue Widening Project, they had asked that we not move their signs, and we agreed to not move their signs, but there were just so many different types of questions that they had that they felt uncomfortable with. And so we thought that it'd be best to go ahead and at least get the resolution so that we can start the eminent domain process, or still, we're still going to try to negotiate with them and get agreement together to bring before you. But we do need to move forward now that we've hired a contractor, and they'll be ready to start here in a couple of weeks. Fortunately, the first several months, we'll be working on the north end of the project. That's why we thought we would get an agreement, and that's why we let it go, as far as we did.
So how long before we do enact the eminent domain on that property? How much longer are we going to give them?
Well, we'll visit with them again, let them, you know, let them know that, you know, we've got to move forward, but it would, we would probably start the eminent domain process after that next meeting with them. From the standpoint, if they, we still aren't able to move forward, you know, it's going to take us, oh, probably six weeks or so to be able to get the county to appoint commissioners, or the judge to appoint commissioners, and then they go out and look at the little triangles that we're talking about.
It's just 200 square feet for each?
Well, there's 200 square feet, a little triangle at each location about where their signs are, and we need, we're adding a right-turn lane on the southbound of Eastern. And so that intersection, what they had asked for was do not relocate the sign. So we redesigned it so we wouldn't have to relocate the sign. But then, as we do their driveway, it has a steep slope right now, and so we want to get some temporary easement so that we can go in and fix their driveway and make it less than what the slope is now. And they just weren't comfortable at this point in time with continuing. But we're going to continue to work with them, as I said.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item five, consider rezoning application number RZ-1025, located in the northwest quadrant, Section 31, Township 10 North, Route 2 West, being south of Southeast 34th Street and east of South Bryant Avenue from A1 Rural Agricultural District to A2 Suburban Agricultural District. And approve ordinance number 1022, application by Vince Dennis.
Vice Mayor and Council, this item was originally heard last week, last week, I'm sorry, last meeting, and it was tabled to allow the council members more time to research the item. So tonight, I will just give a very brief overview, and we can go from there. This property is being requested to be rezoned from A1 Rural Agricultural District to A2 Suburban Agricultural District. The property is currently five acres. The applicant would like to rezone this property in order to split it for a new house in the future. The property does have access to a public water line for fire purposes only, but it does not have access to potable water through a city system or access to city sewer. They do use private systems on their lots. Access is provided from Southeast 38th Street and Turtle Creek Drive. These are both private roads that are maintained by the Property Owners Association. This lot is located in the Turtle Creek neighborhood. And this neighborhood was established by a plat of survey. And plats of surveys is a land division tool that is prepared by a surveyor and just filed at county. So it doesn't necessarily go through the subdivision review process or even necessarily approved by council members. It's something that's allowed in state law. So that's how this property came, and neighborhood came to be. And this is especially important whenever we look at the roadway width and standards that this neighborhood was constructed with, because it does not meet any of the city's standards that we know of. So all lots within the Turtle Creek neighborhood are a minimum of five acres in size. And this rezoning would seek to rezone just one lot to have it split. And it should be assumed that if this was approved, that it would set a precedent in the neighborhood. The neighborhood, the neighbors in the neighborhood are opposed to this application because they feel that it would alter the character of the Turtle Creek neighborhood, and also that it is in violation of the neighborhood covenants and restrictions that they have in that neighborhood. So because of the character of the neighborhood, staff does recommend a denial of this application. And also, you have in your packet a protest application, or protest petition, sorry. This is signed by all of the property owners within the 300-foot protest radius. However, some of the names don't, they might be with a LLC, or I'm sorry, a trust, and we haven't been able to legally verify if that is an approved signatory. So we can't consider this an official protest, but nonetheless, they have put in the... So we can't consider this an official protest, but nonetheless, they have put in the work to get a lot of signatures, and it does match up to what is on county records. So I've made a map of the protest area for you to look at, and I do believe that the residents are here, and as well as the applicant, to speak on the item.
So we've had just numerous calls, and I know there was discussion at the last meeting and at the planning commission as well. And so just for the sake of time tonight, I do want to ask that, you know, if you would like to come up and speak, you're free to do so, but please only add something new to the conversation that hasn't already been said. I personally have had people reach out to me all over the city in regards to this specific request, that, you know, do fear this would set a precedent everywhere, not just in the ward I serve in. And so with that being said, we can, if someone would like to speak, you can come up. Just reminder that there is a five-minute limitation, and again, if you have something new to add, please feel free. Would anybody like to speak?
I would also just say, on the behalf of the citizens, so I'm also Ward One City Council and was not here at the last meeting. I feel like, I know there's only eighteen houses. I think I might have talked to all of you maybe twice, including some football games and texts and emails, and I understand the position and definitely support a denial of this. But if there is anything new that you'd like to add, or sir, if you'd like to state your position as well, we'd be happy to hear that.
Yeah, just make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is David McCurdy. I live at four thousand one Turtle Creek. I am within the three-hundred-foot limit of his lot. Just a clarification, you did say it affected only eighteen lots, but it affects thirty-four lots. It's a quarter-section addition. So that whole quarter-section is all five-acre tracts.
Okay, that makes more sense. That was my, that makes more sense why I've talked to so many people. So thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, any council members? Okay, do we have a motion for denial or acceptance?
I make a motion. Sir.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Since I'm the person that put the, okay. Pay for the surveys.
First of all, I, the covenants are in compliance with the city's mandate. When the city passed a, whatever you want to call it, but they turned around and said, when Norman turned around, went to ten acres, Moore turned around and said that everything east of Bryant had to be five acres. So when this guy made this subdivision, cut it up, he complied with the city, all five-acre The funny part about that is, is that I have one of the five-acre lots. My house is the only one that is up against a subdivision behind me that has a hundred and thirty-five houses on sixty acres, east of Bryant. Not five-acre lots. Only done a few years ago. So I got three neighbors that are within a hundred feet. I can throw a rock at them. But instead, they shoot fireworks at me, and I had to clean them off my roof during the drought. What I want to say to you is, is that my family moved here to Moore twenty-two years ago. We bought a house that was unfinished. It was a shack. It was unfinished grounds. We spent twenty years fixing it up, making it nice. Now, again, I don't have the peace and tranquility that my, all my neighbors have, eighteen of them, not thirty-four lots, because what's on Thirty-Fourth Street is not even part of our organization. So again, in the covenants, it just says that they complied with the city's requirement, or the guy, the developer, did. Except when he went to put in the right-of-way and easements, because I had a subcontractor, a contractor that came in, that we had a meeting, we voted on paving the road because it would stone dust and gravel, and it was a mess. So we paved the road. Problem was is that everybody going down Turtle Creek, just so you know, I've had the property surveyed three times. When your fire department put in their fire hydrants, they made sure that they measured and put the fire hydrants properly in the easement. And the easement happens to be in my neighbor across the street's yard. Turtle Creek Road is in my front yard. And for twenty years, twenty-two years, they've been driving through my front yard, which I don't care about. It's not a problem. I've got plenty of property. Although I could fence it and put a gate on it and charge five bucks admission to go through to go shopping, but, and the guy did that in Florida and got away with it. My point is, is that we've contributed to this community. We put family, we have a family business, we hired local people, we hired people that were, oh, how do you say it? But they had problems, ended up in court, ended up in, because they were knowingly in the presence of or something, but had no prior convictions, we hired them to get them out and get them back to working and supporting, getting their children back, supporting them, okay? I've done charity, I've done mission trips out of my church. We've done a lot of things to contribute to this community. When that hurt, that tornado came through on Fourth Street, that we lost children in the elementary school, they drowned. Our family brought a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in a truck, hot-shot it down to Twenty-Seventh Street Church. We handed out flashlights and batteries to all emergency personnel, volunteer personnel. We went around to every school and made sure that every school teacher, because the lighting systems, your emergency lighting systems in the schools didn't work. We made sure that every teacher in every classroom had a flashlight and batteries. And we've done a lot of things, I don't, I'm not going to go into a big list or anything, but I've given a lot to this community. This is the first time that I've ever, ever come before you and asked to do something that I've wanted to do for twenty-two years, and that was to build a one-story, thirty-five-hundred square-foot house on the front two acres of that five. Split it into a three and two, that did not require easements, did not require any special access. The way my property's set up, my mail is delivered on Thirty-Fourth Street, my mailbox is there. I have a private drive that I put in that goes to the house in the back, that's right up against, again, that wonderful neighborhood behind me. And the front has its own main gate, it's already paved, and it has all of the necessary gas, electricity, water, everything is up in the front, well, water, I put in.
We're over five minutes.
But I just, what I wanted to say is, which is the first time I've asked you to consider something, because a precedent was set by a developer, Hayworth, and I'm asking, that it's not going to impact our subdivision, it's not going to impact my neighborhood. The house is going to be, if anything, an asset, and it'll.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Appreciate it. You can continue your previous five minutes, and then we'll need to move on.
David McCurdy, four thousand one Turtle Creek. I love drama as well as anybody else. Couple of clarifications. One, the addition is not right behind his house. He keeps saying that, but there's a dairy farm behind his house. The addition is actually behind the house to the north of him. You should be able to see that on the map that the lady said she provided you with. Also, he keeps talking about how the road goes through his front yard, and he could put a gate up and charge for it. There's a thirty-foot easement on each side of the property line to provide for the road. The road literally goes through the front of his property, through the front of my property, through the front of Tommy's property. It goes through everybody's property because the easement provides for that access for the road. The other thing he keeps talking about is how well his lot is suited to easily subdivide, and it wouldn't bother anybody. When people decide to start subdividing their property, it's not done in squares or necessarily rectangles. It can be done any way they decide to survey it and dice it up. Therefore, every house in the neighborhood could become a perfect lot to subdivide, which is something the neighbors and the neighborhood in general do not want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? All right, I would just like to say again, we've had multiple calls, not just in this addition, but throughout the city. And this is one of the things that are difficult being on council. I sympathize with you both, that we would set a precedent all over the city, not just this one lot in one city that would cause issues for multiple, multiple citizens, and now and in the future. And so I will vote no. Do we have a?
I make a motion. We vote no on rezoning application ten twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Just before we vote, I would just, I always hope that these issues can be resolved at the planning commission, because when they get here, somebody's going to be unhappy. And I know people on both sides of this, and it's, it isn't always a pleasant job. Usually, it's pretty, pretty simple, but sometimes it isn't. So nothing's personal, it's just, we have to do what we think's going to be best for the city as a whole.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
I would, and we're voting to deny the claim, is that correct?
Yes.
Or the application? I would vote yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
I'm voting yes to deny the claim.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes. Item passes. Item five, consider rezoning applic-, or excuse me, items.
Item failed.
Item.
Item failed, yes, correct. Item six here, consider adopting resolution number three twenty-two, programming traffic signal detection and emergency preemption upgrades of the North Twenty-Seventh Street corridor from Eastern Avenue to Santa Fe Avenue as the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act.
Vice Mayor and Council, items number six through eleven are all resolutions for ACOG grant funding, so I'll try to make this as painless as possible. This resolution is for vehicle detection systems along North Twenty-Seventh Street corridor from Eastern Avenue to Santa Fe. This would be upgrading all of the signal lights to include radar detection and emergency vehicle preemption. This, cost for this would be seven hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars. The Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act does, I should say, the ACOGS program for these funds would allow for funding up to five hundred thousand dollars with no match required. Anything over five hundred thousand dollars would be the city's obligation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And I should also mention that this is, this is not a competitive grant. As long as you meet the requirements, you are awarded the grant.
So did you say radars?
Radar detection, not for speed. This is just to make sure.
Let's define some of these terms.
Right. So radar detection, in this sense, is not to detect anyone's speed, it's to make sure how many cars are stacked at the signal light.
So how fast do you have to be going before the nails come out? Just asking. Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item seven, consider adopting resolution number thirty-three twenty-two, programming the realignment of the southeastern Avenue and South Broadway Avenue intersection as a surface transportation program urbanized area.
Vice Mayor and Council, this resolution is for the Eastern and Broadway intersection project. The resolution was written generically, so you can choose the option that you wanted to choose. Regardless, this resolution will work. It does call for the realignment of this intersection, includes a multi-use trail and streetscape and stormwater quality improvements. The cost for this project is six million, eight hundred ninety thousand and forty dollars. This would be an eighty-twenty match, if awarded.
Okay.
Great. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item nine, consider adoption resolution number thirty-five twenty-two, programming the realignment and widening of Southwest Nineteenth Street and South Broadway Avenue intersection as a surface transportation program urbanized area. Did we skip one?
One and eight.
I'm sorry, guys, I'm on my iPad, and it disappears on me, and I have to reload it. Item eight, consider adopting resolution number thirty-four twenty-two, programming the application of the multi-polymer traffic stripping along North Twenty-Seventh Street corridor from Eastern Avenue to Santa Fe Avenue as a surface transportation program urbanized area.
This resolution is just for street striping from the Twenty-Seventh Street from Eastern Avenue to Santa Fe Avenue. The cost for this is one hundred fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred twenty-eight dollars. This would be for one hundred percent funding, so no local match required. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item nine, consider adoption resolution number thirty-five twenty-two, program the realignment and widening of Southwest Nineteenth Street and South Broadway Avenue intersection as a surface transportation program urbanized area.
This application, or I'm sorry, this resolution was also written somewhat generically to account for any option that you might choose on this intersection. Whatever you choose will include a realignment of the intersection, making it safer, a dedicated left-turn lane, some right-turn lanes, streetscaping, multi-use trail and sidewalks, as well as some stormwater quality measures. The cost for this, estimated cost for this project would be four million, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars, and this would be an eighty-twenty match if it were approved.
I make a motion, we approve, and I can't wait for left-turn lanes. That's all.
Text the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Seconded, I'm sorry.
Mark Ham.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item ten, consider adopting resolution number thirty-six twenty-two, programming traffic signal detection and emergency preemption upgrades to the telephone road corridor from Northwest Fifth Street to Southwest Thirty-Fourth Street, excluding Southwest Nineteenth traffic signal, as a surface transportation program urbanized area.
This application is just like the one we previously discussed. It does include radar detection for the stacking of the vehicles and emergency vehicle preemption. The cost for this would be six hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars, and we are applying under safety funding, which means that it would be one hundred percent if approved.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item eleven, consider adopting resolution number thirty-seven twenty-two, programming the reconstruction and widening of Telephone Road from just south of Southwest Nineteenth Street to just north of Southwest Thirty-Fourth Street, from four lanes to five lanes as a surface transportation program urbanized area.
This application is just to add in a continuous left-turn lane along Telephone Road from Nineteenth Street to Thirty-Fourth Street, would include a multi-use trail, streetscape, and stormwater quality measures. This cost would be five million, six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, and we would be applying under a program that requires an eighty-twenty match, so we'd be required for twenty percent if it were approved.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes, item passes. Item twelve, consider awarding RFQ number twenty-two-three dash zero-zero-four, geographic information system update, historic data, two Park Hill-Limkey land survey and the amount of a hundred and sixty thousand is the lowest best response of bidder.
Vice Mayor and Council, you might remember in twenty fifteen, Limkey surveying was awarded the contract to update the GIS system for the city of Moore. At that time, we adopted an ordinance that was intended to make updates automatic. It gave very specific guidelines as to how engineers were supposed to submit their as-built information in digital format. as-built information in, um, digital format that would seamlessly, um, merge with our system, um, so we could have a continuously updated map. Um, and it turns out that in practice, that has not happened, uh, at all. Um, so, the good news is that we are getting many more as-bills than we have ever received before. We still require the PDF versions of the printed as-bills. However, when it comes to the digital data that they are to submit, um, it somehow does not talk with our system. Um, we have tried to troubleshoot this in every way possible. Um, we've gone even so far as to have our GIS, um, manager go to the offices of the engineers to sit down with their GIS people and try to figure this out, and there doesn't seem to be a solution. Um, another problem that we're having in a, in a lesser degree is that there are some projects that still just aren't giving us as-bills. Um, and most people would think that it's, would be easy to collect those, um, but there are some projects, especially commercial projects, um, that we want to see open. Um, sometimes they don't quite finish out all of the loose ends that are needed to tie up a project. Um, and so sometimes we don't get as-bills at all. Uh, so, in, in looking at this problem, uh, we have about twenty-one projects since the, um, creation of our new data, or GIS system, that we don't have in the, the system. Um, and these range from larger neighborhood subdivisions, um, to smaller projects. But the problem that it creates, uh, is, um, with the C-MOM requirements that, uh, our utilities, Robert Pistol, is required to comply with, we don't know where our water lines are. We don't know the size, where they, you know, it, uh, it's very difficult for him to do his reporting. Um, it's very difficult for developers to talk to us about, um, uh, development when we don't know where the water lines are and show them on a map and show how everything interconnects. Um, and also, it causes great problems with our right-of-way inspections because we do inspect any improvements in the right-of-way, like small cell towers, um, and other, um, fiber optic, uh, installations. Uh, and if we don't know where our water and sewer lines are, it just makes it virtually impossible to tell them where to stay away from. Um, so knowing all of these problems, we did go out to an RFQ for, um, an update to the system. Um, we did receive three responses back. Two, w- we considered to be non-responsive because they only quoted us an hourly rate for inputting these twenty-one projects. We requested, um, an actual fee. Um, and, and so Park Hill, which is Limkey surveying, was the only one who we felt was responsive to our RFQ. Um, their cost was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to get us caught up. Um, that would include doing the digitate, digitization and, um, surveying spot work to make sure everything is correct, um, for the, these twenty-one projects. Um, that's what we're asking you to approve tonight. Uh, moving forward, we're looking at other options, um, whether that be to hire a contractor such as Limkey to help us, uh, put all of this information in, or whether it's hiring an additional person, um, to actually go out there and, um, put in the line and the system as it's being built. Um, we're still looking at those options, but, uh, we felt it was important enough to get our system up to date to come to you with this separate request.
Out of those twenty-one projects, I can't imagine there's twenty-one different engineers, engineering groups on those. How many of those project, or I should say, how many engineering groups are multiple offenders on that, that project?
Well, I'd, I'd, I'd probably wouldn't call them offenders, I think they genuinely want to help.
If they're not turning it in-
Because some, because some of these isn't because they haven't turned in minutes, just because that, the systems don't talk, is that correct?
Systems don't talk.
Right.
Um, the, the ones who don't turn any in, I would probably call offenders, and those are usually the, the ones who don't do a lot of work in Moore.
Okay.
Um, they're usually out of town, like from Texas, uh, or other states that really aren't going to come back here anymore.
Texas.
Um, yeah.
So is there any way we could put something in place to prevent the ones who just didn't turn anything in from working on projects here or fine them?
I, I think it's really, um, difficult. If the council wants to move in that direction, I'm happy to do some research.
I'm ju- I'm just asking.
Right, I, I'm happy to do some research on that, um, you know, but, I mean, I'll just give you an example of one of the projects that didn't finish out is Costco. Um, and, you know, the, the hammer we have is not issuing them a CO, so they can open for business, but-
But you want them to open for business?
We weren't going to do that.
Right.
Well, I'm just thinking, we're coming, and, and I certainly understand that situation, but we're coming out of pocket a hundred and sixty thousand-
Yes.
And the, this can't be so, and I know you said we're going to look at putting preventative measures in place to prevent this from happening again, but I just, I mean, this is frustrating that we really don't have any leverage to go back on them.
Of these twenty-one projects, are, are these the offenders, or are these the ones that have submitted the stuff we just don't, they just can't talk?
They're the combination. It's the as-bills that we don't have in the system.
Okay, okay.
Right, yeah, the, the other engineers, I mean, a, a lot of our work is subdivision work, and there's, you know, a handful of five or six that do subdivision work, um, engineers. And, I mean, when I tell you that we have worked together, like, you know, we've gone over there, we've sat with them, we've looked at what they're doing, we've compared notes, I mean, we've tried everything, and, you know, um, I can come back to the, with the council if you would prefer with some options to make up for a portion of the money, or to see what we can do as far as offsetting the costs, um-
Not really worried about, I mean, I am worried about the cost, but I'm more concerned about putting, putting something in place so we don't find ourselves here again in seven years.
Right.
And so if we could just, and I know you've got so much on your playlist, and I know this is hard, so I'm not saying-
No, right, and that's what we're looking at moving forward, you know?
But I think we need to approve this hundred and sixty thousand right now tonight and get that, yeah.
I agree, I just don't want to be doing it again.
Again, I agree, yeah.
Yes, I understand.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Um, item thirteen, consider ordinance number, uh, ten sixteen twenty-two, amending part ten, chapter five, section ten dash five seventeen, by adding the definition of nicotine product and removing Moss Municipal Enforcement of Possession of Tobacco, Nicotine, or Vapor Products by Persons Under Twenty-One Years of Age, Providing for Severability and Providing for Repealer.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a change to our ordinances concerning youth access to tobacco. Uh, these changes are a reflection to changes in state law. Uh, there are two changes, uh, that are reflected in these ordinance changes. Uh, the first is the state added a definition of nicotine product and, uh, added that term to the list of tobacco products and vapor products as the items that are prohibited. Two, the state also removed in their statute, uh, the section that states that the cities are prohibited from enacting and police officers are, cannot enforce ordinances, uh, in possession of these products by individuals under twenty-one. So that section has now been removed from our ordinance.
But just to be clear, if, uh, a person under the twen- twenty-one years of age or eighteen, or a thirteen or a fourteen-year-old has alcohol, or has, uh, tobacco products, we're not going to be able to do anything?
If they have a tobacco product, a vapor product, or a nicotine product, the new statute states that the ABLE Commission will require the violator to complete an education or tobacco use cessation program, and then the ABLE Commission will then, it says, shall establish rules, it doesn't say what those rules are, but they will be established to provide notification to the parent or guardian of the child, of the minor cited for the violation.
It's not eighteen anymore, I guess I've been-
It's twenty-one, yeah, that changed, uh, about a year or so ago.
Oh.
So to, to answer Councilman Ham's question, who's, who cites them? The, the, the police or the ABLE Commission comes out and cites them?
The, the police are unable to enforce any ordinance.
So that, so we-
So right now, from speaking with the police, I believe that they would be able to confiscate the tobacco slash nicotine slash vapor product, but there will be no enforcement of that.
Take a name and telephone number and address.
And send it to the ABLE Commission.
I do know that, uh, OML and, uh, ACOG and their legislative upcoming agenda will be working to change that, because it doesn't seem to make much sense.
Yeah.
Also, I was surprised that the age was raised. Didn't even know that.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item fourteen, consider awarding a construction management at-risk contract for the Moore Station expansion to Naba Holt's Construction Corporation for a guaranteed maximum price of six million, six hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars for the construction phase, which includes a three-and-a-half percent construction manager's fee of two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Vice Mayor and Council, uh, back on, uh, August twenty-fifth, um, we took bids from all of the different trades for the expansion of the, uh, station project, uh, where we would be, uh, we're adding additional gymnasium, um, we're adding some office spaces, we're adding, um, some rooms for the public to use, um, weight, the weight area and the workout area is expanding, uh, just because there's so many people that, that come to the station. Um, we, we took those bids, the, the bids came in at, uh, six million, six hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars. Um, in, in evaluating, uh, all of those areas, um, we did, uh, uh, you know, look at what's happening with the pricing and the cost of construction, and we just feel that it's going to only continue to, uh, go up instead of down as we move forward. So, uh, we would recommend that we go ahead and award the, uh, contract, uh, the, uh, guaranteed maximum bid, uh, of, of, uh, as I said, six million, six hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred ninety-two. It does, it does provide a, a three percent contingency, uh, should we run into some issues during construction that are unknown or unforeseen at this point in time. Uh, but with that, we'd recommend that we award the contract to, uh, Knob Holt's Construction.
I think that's great. Thank you for negotiating that maximum.
Yep, and, um, I know the construction manager's fees in here at two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-two dollars, but the benefit of the, doing the construction management is that they work with the architect right from the start to help bring down costs, and so I'm, I'm a big proponent of the construction manager, um, service, so I, I like that we're doing that.
That's, that's correct. In fact, um, we, we did, they have been working with the architect for the past six months, you know, and, and able to bring it down to this, this point, and, you know, so.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Item fifteen, consider authorizing the purchase of a Pro QA fire software in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars from Priority Dispatch as a sole-source provider using nine-one-one phones.
Uh, good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Last year, we purchased emergency medical dispatch software so we can approve and start dispatching for Mstat. That software provided training and certification and resources to better respond to our citizens' needs. It improved our nine-one-one EMS responses and reduced liability to the city. So now we're asking to expand additional nine-one-one funds to expand and enhance nine-one-one response to include nine-one-one fire response. So the fire software will correctly identify the priority at hand, properly identify hazard types, identify early send points to minimize call processing gaps, and provide consistency for all experienced levels of dispatchers, to name a few of the benefits. Um, this is the same software that we currently use for our EMS dispatching, so it should be a pretty seamless transition. So we're asking for the authorization to purchase the Pro QA fire software in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars out of the nine-one-one funds, and myself and our colleagues here will be happy to answer any questions you may have about the software.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, or?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. We'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item sixteen is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April third, or, excuse me, October third, twenty-twenty-two. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three in the amount of one million, ninety thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes, item passes. Um, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item seventeen is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held October third, twenty-twenty-two. Item B, approve payment of workers' compensation settlement in the amount of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred sixty-five dollars for CBR number two-zero-five, zero-zero-zero-zero-six-seven-one to Ronnie Rawson, and authorize placement on the ad valorem tax. Item C, approve payment of workers' compensation settlement in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars for CBR number two-zero-five, zero-zero-zero-zero-seven-three-one to Ronnie Walton, and authorize placement on the ad valorem tax roll. Item D, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three in the amount of two-hundred-seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars[1672.48]